I'll call this meeting of the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Here.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Chalka?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here. Please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you taking a motion on the agenda as received or amended?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the agenda is approved. Next, we will move on to public comments. Is there anybody from the public first in the boardroom that wishes to speak on an issue that is not an agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move online. If there's anybody from the public wishing to speak during public comments. Alright, hearing none, we will move on to presentations. We'll, we have a presentation today from Jessie Christman from Family Treatment Court. Welcome.
Well, alright. Hello, well, thank you all for having me. My name is Jessie Christman and I am the Family Treatment Court Coordinator for Black Hawk County, as well as for Saragordo County. So I'm here today just to kind of tell you a little bit about what Family Treatment Court is all about. And I'm hoping that maybe in the future, we could find ways to partner. We are hoping to create an advisory board that we would call a steering committee, and some of you might be some ideal candidates. So, um, this is our first step in hopefully educating you all on what Family Treatment Court is all about. I'm pretty excited about it, so I'll try to follow my notes and not ramble too much. Basically, Family Treatment Court is an innovative alternative to business's usual juvenile court. It's backed by empirically supported practices that are comprised, or, um, Family Treatment Courts are comprised of a multidisciplinary team of professionals. We use a collaborative approach to serve families with substance use disorders who are involved with the child welfare system. So eligibility for parents are that they have an open, what's called a China case. It's a child in need of assistance that is at least initiated in part due to substance use. Let's see, so the professionals on the Family Treatment Court team are representatives from child welfare. We have substance use treatment professionals and experts. We have mental health agencies. We have juvenile court officers and other community partners representing primarily social service agencies. We work together in a non-adversarial approach to support parents in their recovery and reunification journeys. So I mentioned later, our goals are to help support parents in recovery. So whatever that looks like, it's, like I said, it's definitely research-based on best practices for substance use recovery. And we hope that families are able to become happy and healthy and remain together. So this team meets twice per month. We meet upstairs in the third floor law library and review the cases of the parents who voluntarily chosen to participate. We talk about their progress. We talk about any barriers they may be facing. And, um, the parents also attend and they have the opportunity to update the judge in person in a more informal setting as opposed to, you know, typical juvenile court where it's very structured and intimidating. And usually they speak through their attorneys and don't have much opportunity to speak freely with the judge. So we provide them that opportunity to get to know the judge better. And in Black Hawk County, our presiding judge over Family Treatment Court is Judge Linda Fangman. But the parents are able to talk to her about any accomplishments or struggles in a very informal way. And the team works together to help them problem solve those struggles. And also, we really celebrate any progress or accomplishments. We know that that means a lot and sometimes what might appear to be a small step for someone who's not experiencing substance use disorders, we acknowledge that as, as a big deal. So there's lots of clapping and cheering and supporting. The FTC model is a research-based practice available in many counties across the United States. It was created by the Center for Children and Family Futures, as well as the National Association of Drug Court Professionals, which is now going by the name All Rise. So it was born out of the idea of adult drug courts. Basically, I believe there was a judge in Nevada and a judge in California in the nineties who were noticing that during their drug courts, just how impacted the families were. So for, for example, if they were losing their primary breadwinner, how that impacted their significant other, as well as their children, how the children were impacted by being exposed to substance use. So they found a need to bring the whole family in, and that's what Family Treatment Court's all about. The best practice standards that locally in the state of Iowa were created by Iowa Children's Justice, so that's who I work for through the Iowa judicial branch. And if the best practice standards are followed with fidelity, the intended outcomes include children spending less time out of the home, parents entering treatment sooner and staying longer, and parents are more likely to reunite with their children. And as well, uh, parents are less likely to have subsequent child welfare involvement. So yeah, I'm gonna read to you the mission real quick. To protect children, so Family Treatment Court mission is to protect children from abuse and neglect associated with substance use of a parent or caregiver by addressing the comprehensive needs of children, parents, and family members through an integrated court-based collaboration of court, child welfare, treatment, and social service providers who work as a team to achieve timely decisions, coordinated treatment, and ancillary services, judicial oversight, and safe and permanent placements. And then I have more information, but I'm not sure how much time you want to give me.
You've got more time if you want.
I got more time, alright, cool. Well, um, I just want to review those goals that I had mentioned earlier. Our goals are really long-term recovery. So our program can last anywhere from nine months to a year, to a year and a half. We really want to instill in these parents, there's something that's called social capital, and it's really just the social bonds that are going to create pro-social behaviors and healthy habits for those parents who formerly have had lives of substance use, and that's kind of what maintains their recovery through hopefully a long ti- a lifetime. Like we said, family reunification, the goal, just as it is with child welfare, with Family Treatment Court, is to ensure that families are unified, unless there's no alternative. So we want those kids to have permanency. We want to ensure children have safe, nurturing, permanent homes. And we want to also address the needs of the family members and make sure that they receive the needed supports and services. So like I said, eligibility is any, um, it can be outside of Black Hawk County because this is a program that's only available, and I believe, nine counties across the state. Um, and it's something that, like, each county takes upon themselves to see whether or not they'd like a Family Treatment Court, and then they have to adhere to the initial steps of creating that Family Treatment Court. So only nine counties have done so thus far, and I believe that they started around 2008. So, we primarily serve Black Hawk County, but if there's anybody in a surrounding county that would meet the eligibility requirements, then they would be considered for eligibility as well. However, there would be, you know, communication between different judges and different counties, and, but we can make it work. And also, yeah, substance use has to be involved, and usually the, I don't know if I'm going in and out of the microphone, sorry. Usually, the, um, charges associated with substance use or the allegations for child abuse are presence of dangerous substance or failure to supervise. And like I said, it's voluntary. The requirements of the parents who do participate in the program is that they have to get a substance use and a mental health assessment. And we encourage them to comply with those treatment requirements. They also have to attend all Family Treatment Court days. So we meet twice monthly. We meet the second and fourth Monday of every month upstairs, like I said, in the law library initially, and then we move to Judge Fangman's courtroom for the hearing part. And they also have to do two weekly drug testing, random drug testing. So that's more than what's required by somebody who's not participating in Family Treatment Court. And it's not to catch parents, it's to greater, um, allow us the opportunity to support them. So we encourage honesty. We tell parents, even if you think you're gonna have a positive drug test, we want you to go and get that drug test because the initial phases of recovery, um, there's a theory called stages of change. The initial phases are just showing up. Um, so just show up and get that drug test, even if you think it's gonna be positive. And if it is positive, that's a learning opportunity for us to all problem solve what had gone wrong, um, and how we can prevent that from happening in the future. Cause we do know that recurrence of use is a normal part of recovery. So that's not a cause for discharge from the program. That's an opportunity for us to work together and see how we can prevent that from happening in the future. What else? Yeah, um, we do ask them to abstain, but like I said, we know that a recurrence of use is not uncommon. The benefits for parents in participating in the program is that they build positive supports and a positive community with other parents. It's really cool to see that they form their own little support group. Like, we have primarily moms right now participating, and they took it upon themselves to do a Secret Santa gift exchange for Christmas, and I thought that was really cool. They all exchanged numbers. They help one another out. They're at different phases in their recovery journeys and in their reunification cases for juvenile court. So they're able to kind of lead each other through what that process looks like and support one another. So that's really great that they grow their sober community. There's a saying in the recovery community that the opposite of addiction is not sobriety, but the opposite of addiction is community. So yeah, they also have greater access. I feel like this is going in and out.
Nope, we hear you fine.
Okay, good, good. So the opposite, or, I'm sorry, the, um, parents who participate also have greater access to community resources. So if they're struggling with transportation, housing, continuing their education, employment opportunities, there are people sitting at the table who represent agencies that help with those barriers. So that's really helpful to have them there in person, so we're able to make real connections instead of just handing them a phone number and saying, "Call this person." We're able to say, "Hey, this is Lisa with House of Hope, and she can get you on the waitlist for an apartment." We can make those, you know, real-time connections with a face with a name. Like I said, they have increased contact with the judge, so if they're doing what they need to be doing for their case, then the judge is able to see them more frequently as opposed to regular juvenile court setting where they meet maybe every three, six months. And the judge isn't really, uh, of course, they have access to anything that's been updated in the system in the interim, but they can't hear that from the parent's mouth or the parent's perspective. So it's a real benefit for their parents to be able to have that face-to-face informal communication with the judge. We also provide fun family events. We do, like, we met at the splash pad a bunch of times during the summer. We had a picnic during National Recovery Month, which is in September. And we have Christmas events. So we provide them fun family sober events. The research also says that we're replacing positive brain connections, so we're rewiring how they find pleasure. So by providing them fun family activities with their children, we're replacing those kind of damaged, I guess, brain connections that were associated with substance use previously. And also provide them more time with their children. So we know that unfortunately, the family-centered service providers through Mid-Iowa and Families First are only able to offer about twenty hours per family. And if they have two parents who are involved with child welfare, that means that those two parents have to split that time. And also, it's dependent upon, you know, short-staffed providers with limited schedules, limited availability. So we provide them with more opportunities to interact with their children outside of those parenting time requirements. And yes, currently, we have nine parents who are participating with a total of twenty-four children. We look forward to celebrating graduate soon. So we have five phases of our program. And at the completion of those five phases that they progress through, we celebrate a graduation, and we haven't had one in, in some time. So we're really excited to celebrate a graduate with cake, and kids are invited. All that parent's supports are invited. Whoever they want to be there can be there. They get a certificate. And we really try to make a big deal of it. And this mom in particular worked really hard, and everyone is just super impressed. So she deserves all the recognition. Cause she's secure in her recovery. She's established pro-social, healthy relationships to ensure her continued sobriety and the continued health and happiness of her children. So that's definitely our ultimate outcome we want to see. And I think that's all I have. I don't know if you do questions, or?
Um, I know you mentioned in our conversation that within your association, there have been talks about how to possibly utilize some of the opioid settlement money for your work. And so we, we definitely be interested in those. Not, we actually have to go through that today, but conversations in the future, so it's.
Absolutely, yeah.
I appreciate the excellent work that you're doing, though.
Thank you.
Really impactful and powerful.
Thank you, thank you. Well, yeah, we, we definitely be interested in being a part of any conversations with the opioid funds I was explaining to Brian earlier, that unfortunately, there are, um, I can't ask for money as a state employee, so I won't do that. But I definitely want to be a part of those opioid funds distribution and see if we can get some, you know, of our local providers to the table.
Very good, thank you.
Sorry, quick question. Your current program is about nine families, you said?
Yes.
What's the sort of program capacity?
That's a good question. Uh, we've determined, so we have our scale and capacity to comfortably serve all the families because the, you know, staffing takes time. We, we dedicate quite a bit of time addressing each parent's needs and progress. So we, we'd say the ideal number is around ten. We try to engage, though, twenty percent at least of the families who are involved with child welfare. And I, I would say, I, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. But we're, we, we provide everyone the opportunity because it is voluntary. Not everyone chooses to participate. And there are some other barriers that might prevent them from participating. We do have, I think I forgot to mention that we have a weekly fire group, and that takes place here at the courthouse as well. And that's a recovery group that meets every Monday, and sometimes employment's inflexible, transportation's an issue. So yeah, for whatever reason, parents will voluntarily choose not to participate, but every parent who meets the eligibility requirement, I make an effort to introduce myself to them and at least educate them about the program and give them the opportunity to join if they'd like to.
Thanks. Any other questions, Board? Well, thank you, Jessie.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you for having me, and thank you for all you do.
Alright, we'll next move on to item four. This is claims and payments. It's a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county be authorized and directed to issue checks against various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded. Michelle?
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is one hundred eighty-four thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. Out of that, we are paying four thousand, one hundred seventy-three dollars and thirty-two cents from the sixty-forty fund. There really aren't any significant payments today. Everything appears to be in order. If you have any questions, let me know.
Alright, any questions, Board? Alright, this is a, a resolution. Please answer as your name is called. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Next, we will receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Niklisk, engineer. Brief update on the roads. The roads are in, uh, good condition. The gravel roads are doing pretty well, considering how warm it's been. But we're having a slow melt-off, so that's very helpful. I did hear from a resident in Washburn yesterday, and I needed to, I just wanted to inform you of what's going on out there. This is concerning a culvert on the, uh, the perimeter drain, the perimeter drainage way. So I'm sure you're all familiar with the drainage way now that is on the north and the south, excuse me, the west portion of the Washburn community, and then on the southern border of the community in Washburn. Most of this is an open channel constructed to, you know, eliminate the flow from getting into Washburn. There is a culvert down here on this southern perimeter that is, um, has some issues right right now that I wanted to bring your, to your attention to. This is the way the culvert looked. I took this photo a year ago, so you can see, I think, I believe it's a twenty-four inch culvert. And then it goes to the east here, about seven hundred feet underground, and then it exits at that large flap gate that I've showed you photos of. And currently, this, the caller who lives right across the road from this culvert is concerned that this grate has fallen, and it's come probably, there are some bolts that typically would hold this grate up here. Those have probably rusted away, and that's fallen down in, into the culvert itself. He is concerned that debris from coming rains will be getting into the culverts, possibly animals, or doesn't want children, of course, going into the culvert. So I wanted to bring this to your attention and let you know if you, you would like me to take any action, or what, if you want any further action.
Have you done something similar?
If this would be a county culvert on county right-of-way, roadway right-of-way, there are some bolts that we have not gone out and looked at this, but we, if it's like our other culverts, there's probably some bolts that hold that grate to the top of the culvert. We would probably, probably weld those back on there and be able probably to refasten it.
And that would be something I guess we could take out of the Washburn, I would, I would assume. Is there funding in the Washburn sewer? Fund?
I don't know that we could use the sanitary sewer for this because it's storm sewer, unfortunately.
I know, but.
But I think, um, we could find a way, probably.
Cause that's kind of the issue is.
A minor.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Funding for it. Yeah.
We, we can work with you, Michelle, to.
Let's see, yeah, see if there is something anyway.
It seems like this would be a relatively minor repair for a, a, a safety insurance.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'd like to see it done.
Yeah.
Yes.
Likewise.
Do you have any other questions for me? Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Sheriff Thompson, and I had indicated to you last week that our project for the front lobby and administrative areas, our remodel is just about done. We have made the decision to go ahead and have a grand reopening, open house next week, Wednesday, the fourteenth, from ten o'clock in the morning until one o'clock in the afternoon. It's kind of come as you can and, and just take a quick tour, walk around, see the, see the place. The artwork is now up. The, uh, facility will be open. We still have some pick list items, but they're pretty well hidden from the naked eye. You won't really recognize it except for, you know, some carpet spots that have to be replaced and some minor things that have to be repaired, all those like any project kind of thing. And probably the, the hit of the, uh, of the open house will be our newest deputy. I also indicated to you last week that I had the pleasure of swearing in our newest deputy last week. Uh, she raised her hand and swore to uphold the constitution of the state of Iowa and the rules and regulations of the sheriff's office, and, uh, she's been doing all of that. In fact, last night was her first public appearance at Raisin Canes. She helped to raise money for the canine program and the community services program. This is Deputy Mary, and she comes to us from New York. She has one of those New York accents. She comes to us from a program called Puppies Behind Bars. Um, she didn't cost us anything. She was donated to our agency from that program. As you know, uh, our canine program is funded all out of donations regardless. So she will be taken care of out of the canine fund, but the Puppies Behind Bars program is a nonprofit organization where the dogs start off their training in the New York State prison system. She was managed by a couple of different handlers, or, or, what do you call them? Razors?
Puppy razors.
Puppy razors, uh, in the New York State prison system. She's unique in that she is not a canine that traditionally searches for narcotics, does tracking, any of those kinds of things. Her primary response is mental health and wellness. And so I'm gonna have her handler, Deputy Carla Altonbaum, kind of walk you through what, uh, what Mary brings to the table.
Good morning.
Morning.
Nice to meet you guys. Um, so Mary here is on her second week at the sheriff's office officially. She primarily, like Sheriff Thompson said, is for, um, mental health, but she's for officer wellness. And, um, I'm part, or I'm the coordinator for our peer support team, so she'll definitely help with that. She also will be doing different community events, like the one we did last night, but also will be helping me in the schools. I envision will go, you know, into daycares and nursing homes or something in the future, just to kind of get out there, and, um, I mean, who doesn't love a dog, right? And then another unique thing she does is called crisis response. So anytime there's a, a situation where there's a crisis situation, whether it be a local, um, situation where dealing with a mental health person, or a bigger situation like, uh, the Perry School shooting, we could go to a situation like that, and she, uh, sorry, uh, she knows what to do. I would just essentially let her off her leash, and she just goes and does her thing. Currently, at the sheriff's office, we walk in the back door. I let her off her leash, and she goes around and checks in with everybody, uh, makes sure everybody's doing okay, and then periodically she'll come back and check in with me, and let, you know, she's alright, and then she'll go back and do her thing. But, um, she's, I just tell people she's here to be loved on. She's here to be petted, you know, to, um, she's here for, for you, and, um, she loves attention, but she also is very in tune to people's emotions. So, uh, she's very good at, um, kind of telling if somebody isn't, you know, feeling quite right. She'll, she'll definitely check in and, you know, just let you pet her, do whatever, but, um, yeah, she's pretty amazing, so.
I think this time, we're gonna take a brief recess.
I'll let her do her thing. So as you can see, she has a, the traditional vest on, but at the top, she has a patch that says, "I'm friendly, please pet me," so. Traditionally, people still ask, but at the sheriff's office, I just tell people, like, "Let me know if you're gonna take her somewhere because I just know where she's at," but.
How long was her training?
Uh, so she goes into, uh, prison at eight weeks old, and then, uh, she will be two in March. So I went out there in the beginning of January, so.
Okay.
She's been in the prison system since then, but, um, in order to get them socialized, they have volunteers that come in and take them out and take them to the grocery store, take them to restaurants, all those sorts of things, too. So they're not just institutionalized, basically, so like. Yes, they live with their razor at the prison, um, and the, the razors train them on all their commands, and then when I went out there, they trained me on the commands.
Okay, interesting.
She does lots of different stuff. This is what she does with the sheriff.
I think she's a great addition to the department.
I agree.
As you know, about sixty percent of our inmate population is mentally ill. And, uh, as the enforcement arm for the courts, uh, every court committal, uh, those kinds of things are the obligation of the sheriff's office. And so having, uh, both, uh, a counselor that is also a deputy, Carla also works, uh, part-time for Elevate. And so having that duo working together on the street, uh, being able to take those mental health calls, being able to take some of those transports, being able to respond to some of those more high-risk or more difficult, uh, more challenging calls for us and respond, de-escalate, uh, do those kinds of things out on the street, as well as our own mental health and mental wellness types of, uh, things around the office. We thought that this was a fantastic opportunity. Mark and I actually found, uh, this program while we were down in Atlanta talking about community engagement at a symposium down there, and we're introduced to a gentleman that had one, uh, from this program out of Brown, or, uh, Brown University? Brown University. And so we pursued them, and, uh, this is as far west as they've ever had a dog. So, uh, very interesting, very excited, and, and obviously, a huge force multiplier for what we're able to do on that part of policing, which is unfortunately becoming more and more, uh, uh, demand for us.
Oh, that's great. I, I appreciate the, the thoughtfulness going into just looking at new ways of responding, so it's.
Thank you for the time. Thank you for allowing us to disrupt you just a little bit.
Alright, any other department heads want to try to top that? Alright. Uh, if not, we will move on to the minutes approved from the January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the minutes are approved. Next, we will move on to the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution unless there's, uh, anything in the way which is to pull out to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Next, we'll move on to contracts and agreements. This is a resolution that the best bid received from Peters Construction Waterloo, Iowa for the total amount of one million, six hundred seventy-five thousand, nine hundred ten dollars for the multi-department remodel project to accommodate remodeling for the elections and treasurer's office, and resulting in the offices of the auditor, accessory, attorney, and basement common areas also being impacted. Be approved for the chair to sign for the same as recommended by Roy Giving, facilities director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, Roy, do you want to speak at all, or?
Uh, good morning, Board. Roy Giving, facilities director.
Uh, good morning, board. Uh, Roy Giving, facilities director. Um, as you know, we did receive uh two proposals for this project. Um, after uh review by Envision and ourselves, um, we are confident in making the recommendation to go with uh Peters Construction.
All right, board. Any uh discussion or questions? Um, hearing none. Uh, roll call, uh, please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Felka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Short?
Yes. Uh, next, we'll move on to uh tonight. This is other business. This is a motion that the personal requisition uh for temporary civil engineer tech aid one effective May first, twenty twenty-four be approved as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, any questions, Kathy? All right. Uh, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, the motion carries. Uh, next, uh, item B. This is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing slash bid opening we held at nine oh five AM on February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four in Boardroom two oh one, the Blackhawk County Courthouse, three sixteen East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four payment markings project in various locations throughout Blackhawk County.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Kathy, do you want to speak?
Yeah, this is just our our usual routine payment markings. We want to get this done before the end of the fiscal year so that uh the roads can be marked for six or seven months before the next upcoming winter season. Can I answer any questions?
Board, any questions, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Uh, next, we move on to item ten. This is a work session, discussion, consideration, all aspects of the fiscal year, um, uh, Blackhawk County budget.
All right. We are gonna start off today with a presentation from our county libraries. So I'm not sure who the designated spokesperson is, but.
Okay, escape. This is a different screen than than up here. On that one. Okay. See, it's easier if you do it for me. There you go. Okay, that's right. All right. Good morning and thank you for having us. Um, I'm Jolene Cronchnabel. I'm the library director in Laporte City.
And I'm Mary Ducey. I'm the library director in Hudson.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank you for um the funding that you have always given us, the support you have given us. Um, and one of the things that we recently received additional support on was the um Delly Parton Imagination Libraries, which is a um reaches, you know, anybody in the county is for books for children five years or under five years of age. And um, some of these people don't come into the libraries, but they subscribe to this program and it is kind of a stepping stone um for reading and literacy in the home and and will eventually get them in the libraries. Um, here's just a comparison of um fiscal for our request and how we compare to other counties in Iowa as far as funding. Um, so, you know, we do well. Um, um, but, you know, we're below a lot of metropolitan areas. And obviously, if we have more funding, uh, we can get more materials and more services um to the peoples, people in our counties. Um, some of the services that we provide, and there are seven libraries in Blackhawk County, so we do have internet and Wi-Fi service that people can come in and use at any time. Um, we keep these services on. So even if we're not open, sometimes they're in our parking lots or beside our doors, whatever it takes. Um, and libraries also have um hotspots that they will loan out too for people who need that type of service. Um, our technology assistance, um, people come in and need help on computers, uh, can't navigate it themselves, um, have problems. Um, they may come in with their phones, their tablets, uh, their laptops and and we try and help them in any way we can to navigate everything that is online that they are now required to do. Um, cause so many things are online now and you can't just pick up a form or make a phone call, things like that. And and there are plenty of people that need help with things like that. Um, homework help is a service that we offer um online and people can call in um in at any level, even college level, and get help online with assistance. Um, and test proctoring, we also do in the library for this um educational facilities that do require that. Um, so we will make sure that they take the test. We will verify it. We send in test results. Um, however, they require that to be recorded in order for people to get credit um for their tests. Um, we have business services, um, including notaries. So we're easy to access. Sometimes our hours are broader and easier for people to access for that type of thing. Um, one thing that we've seen an increase in is, um, especially probably with small towns, is the fact that we offer um copying, faxing, scanning, that type of thing, which you you can't always get in a small town. Uh, public meeting space, we have rooms that we can um, you can sign up for and use for meetings. Uh, we carry local history and genealogy in our libraries for those people that want it. Um, we have online newspapers. They carry the history of our communities. Um, we've always offered research and reference services and um reading recommendations are obviously one of our favorite things to do um so that we bring up more readers. Uh, we have storytimes for all our youngsters um are offered on a regular basis. Some are reading programs. We're all planning for that now. And some of our reading programs aren't just for kids. Um, it also includes adult programming. Uh, book clubs could be in-house or often there are groups within the community that form their own book club that we help them get their reading materials for. So it's much broader than just an in library group. Um, STEM activities and STEAM activities both in the last several years have become a bigger and bigger thing with the science, technology, um, engineering, mathematics, and arts being included in that. Um, and we work with a lot of grant programs that help us get materials in order to be able to facilitate and sponsor those programs in our libraries. Um, most of us have movie licenses so we can do uh, we can show movies for entertainment or different educational um things going on for all different ages. Um, we love to have author talks. Um, and so people understand what it's like to be an author, the workings of writing a book, if they have any interest in that, how to market it. Um, authors can be very informative on a lot of different topics, um, and not just educational about their book. Um, maker activities, we have out in the library. Um, a lot of us have passive activities um through different days and and throughout the weeks where we've got an activity out where families can just come in and have some family time, kids can have some creative time. Um, and you don't have somebody leading the activity. Um, or sometimes there are challenges or um holiday things or a lot of different ways that you can structure that where if a child needs something to do or has to get out of the house, uh, or a family can come in, everyone's got something to take part in because they've got um hands-on and creativity sitting right there in front of them. Um, and then there are our book and fandom festivals and you'll you'll see a example of this as we talk about some of the specific library activities. Anything you want to add?
Hmm.
Okay, so in Cedar Falls, um, they've got a couple of things on here about like your your fandom or book book activities, um, cause they had a children's book festival in August. And then the uh, yes, that's the one I was thinking of where and and that's the big thing. The children love to come and see their favorite book characters. And yeah, our purpose is to get them interested in reading, to increase literacy, because it opens the world to them in all sorts of different ways. Um, another interesting thing that Cedar Falls has done is they have a Charlie cart, which is like a portable kitchen on a cart, which now enables them to um give people cooking demonstrations and lessons. Um, they took advantage of the astronaut Rajeshari coming and doing a program for NASA, which is would have been a great score for any of us to have him speak at our libraries. Um, and then here's a example of a STEM grant where they have a hydroponic system for use with teens. So that's that's a, you know, a science hands-on thing um that is is probably a new exploration with these kids. Um, do you want to talk about Dunkerton?
Sure. Um, Dunkerton Public Library um um have had a focus on community partnerships um with the community school, with their historical association, which I believe has some space actually in their building um on the lower level. Um, ISU Extension and Outreach is a great resource for us all and um offers us, you know, a huge wealth of programs. Um, and the Dairy Association, uh, programming, they have had crafting workshops, including jewelry making and sewing. Again, the youth STEM or STEAM activities um has been a big focus for us all. And then they did some Halloween family photos that you can see there with the the backdrop. So that looks like that was a lot of fun. Evansdale Public Library, aquaponics through the STEM, a SCIM scale-up program. Again, I'm sure a grant opportunity. Um, they have drop-in technology help. One of the things that we see is a lot of phone questions. Um, hosted a weekly cribbage club, um, had the a canine officer meet and greet. Um, and they do monthly crafting activities. And then throughout the year, all of us, especially with our children's programming, have holiday-themed um programming. That's always a great opportunity to get some people in. At the Hudson Public Library, um, we continue to be a gathering place for the community in the surrounding area, help address the issue of isolation, especially among seniors. They have a couple of notes on that. There's been a lot of talk lately about libraries as the third place. You have your home, you have your work, and the public library can help fill a niche for a place where you get that social interaction. Um, somebody else mentioned that prosocial, the community, um, the relationships that are necessary for our mental health. Um, one of the things that came out um just yesterday in in Library Journal, but recently there was a study by the Surgeon General of America. Loneliness has been dubbed the new smoking by health experts. Um, loneliness is as bad for our well-being as smoking fifteen cigarettes daily. Um, it's really detrimental and I think we all see it. Um, we we see, I don't, I don't know if you want to blame it on the pandemic and the way it changed things and we became isolated and haven't really stepped back out of that. But but there definitely is a loneliness epidemic. Um, we see that in Hudson. We have tried to step up and help um provide opportunities to resolve some of that. Um, Jolene mentioned passive programming, you know, we have done, we're trying to create opportunities where if you are isolated at a certain time, you can come and play cards or play games or work on a big jigsaw puzzle or play bingo or join the cookbook club or join the book club or it is a non-judgmental space. It is free and open to everyone. And if you really think about it, that doesn't exist really anywhere else. You don't gather at at Walmart. You don't, you know, it's we fill a niche and it it's very much um, it's very much needed and necessary right now. Um, we need to remain a place where everyone can see themselves. Um, loneliness isn't about being alone, it's about feeling alone. And so a lot of us have really tried to step up and help um alleviate some of that burden in the community. Um, it's um, it's essential for our physical and mental health. So um, we appreciate your support of the libraries so that we can help support our communities. Um, we also have sought out and connected with our other city departments and agencies and organizations to enhance our programming opportunities. One of the pictures you see there is um the fire department. They come in during a storytime, dressed in gear, you know, they start out without it and then they put it on so that the preschoolers especially learn not to be frightened of people in uniform. We work with both our police department and our fire department. We have a wonderful school resource officer in Hudson, Jamal Carrica, and he, um, the the kids stick to him like glue. It's really a sight to behold. He's the the most popular guy in town, but uh he has come and done several programs at the library too. Um, our increase in electronic materials, that continues to um to rise. And then we have our library of things. Um, just recently started circulating more games, but we have a disc golf course in town and we check out discs so that kids who maybe don't have, you know, sporting equipment at home can still participate in our physical activities that we offer around town. So.
Oh, yes, this one's me. Okay, so we have a lot of partnerships and we mentioned that um in some of the other slides because we work with the elementary school. I have the whole school come in every year for six hours of these kids and we do a program for them where they learn what's in the library and do a scavenger hunt. Um, we share with them all the everything they can be involved in with summer reading. And so um, I then I see a lot of these kids come back because they know uh what resources we have and they want to use them. Um, we do a food drive with the school. We work with the middle school and high school um for volunteers. Um, I have a work-study student usually every year. Um, they come in and do research for programs. I have a childcare class at the high school that comes in um and does research for their um class. Um, one of our biggest summer programs, and we do programs almost every single day, what we're showing you here is just the tip of the iceberg of things that we do because we have programs um going on all the time. Um, but we work with the police department and other um partnerships in town and we do a lunch with the library at the park. So it's a, it's an open, non-threatening area. We started this after COVID so that we weren't in an enclosed room. They they help us provide lunches. We read to the kids for a good half an hour and then we have activities or they get to play with their friends. And that has been a great way to promote literacy and to draw people into the library too. Um, and we work with the museum and the nursing home in town and all, you know, a lot of different businesses also. Um, for holiday fun, we've already mentioned that we do a lot of things. One thing we have in town is Santa. Santa comes to the library on the fire truck and it is a very big day in Laporte City when that happens and we have all sorts of activities downtown. So we help kick that off. Um, for spring break activities, we have coming up, we do things like Slime and STEM and we have the extension service in and um, uh, who else is coming in Farm Bureau and, you know, a different activity every day where we see people um come in and take advantage of that and then stay for the other things that we have to offer. Um, and then another example here was we have an Easter bunny hop, um, where we have a morning of activities before an egg hunt. Um, in Jamesville, they have had a huge year because they have a new library, um, a facility open that was three times the size of what they previously had, which was very limited space, and they tripled their square footage and moved there. And um, as you can see by the the second notation there, that they saw great participation and they went from twelve programs a year to five per week. Um, so having having the space and the resources that we need makes it obvious that people, they come, they come and they use us uh when they feel like they've they've got the space and the programs um that will fit their needs and and they can socialize and come for other reasons. Um, and they they also must have started an event jingle in Jamesville, which is um, you know, communities love these special programs that gets everyone involved. And usually everyone pitches in um when that happens. Um, so Waterloo, uh, one big event they had was International Dot Day. And so then they worked with the school district and were able to display over three thousand hand-drawn dots, which would have been absolutely amazing in there. Um, a tool library. Okay, we've all. A tool library. Okay, we've all adopted ma, or. Library of Things, that's the word I want, where we have not just library books that you can check out. We have, we have puzzles, we have board games, we have outdoor games. We'll have a variety of tools. Some have cake bands. It could be anything that we see a need for in our community. A lot of us have audiovisual equipment, you know, that you only need periodically, but you can come in and you can borrow that or other equipment from the library. So that has filled a gap that some people have because they don't always have access to these things. And then they had a big Bluey Bash, 635 children and their caregivers. So that, that is a heck of a crowd, and, and it had to have been a lot of fun for them to have that event in their library. So here's a list of the libraries that you're funding. Cedar Falls, Dunkerton, Evansdale, Laporte City, that's me, Hudson, Jamesville, and Waterloo. And we really appreciate what you do for us. Do you have anything else you want to add?
No, I just, I had another quote from this article that just came out yesterday, and it was, "Support is necessary for libraries to build and maintain robust and diverse collections, to design creative programs that engage a wide range of audiences, and to ensure that our spaces remain open and welcoming places for all." So thank you for your support in your, in the past, and I hope you can increase that support a little bit this year for us because, as we all know, the cost of, of everything is not going down. It's, you know, it gets to be more and more difficult to do more with less, and we are called on to do more, year upon year upon year. And I just want you to remember how very important it is and how important your support is to our community, but, and including our rural residents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Did you have any questions?
Questions, Mark? No, thank you. Appreciate what you're doing.
Appreciate you, yes, guys. I'm going to quite a bit of detail of telling you about the different programs. Those of us who don't get in the library very often, it's nice to see.
You're always welcome, always welcome. You can come with empty pockets, and we'd love it if you would come visit us.
Could we have the, the slides shared with staff or with the board on this one? I'm just intrigued especially about that first one. If we can get a copy of this, it would be helpful.
Al, do we have a copy of that that we can keep?
I can get that to you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I think Caitlin's going to present the Health Department budget next.
Did we get present, we didn't get the presentation materials?
Oh, oh my gosh, I forgot to bring them.
That's all right. Just double checking.
They're all on a pile. Do you want me to go get them?
We can, we can take it, let's take a little recess. Take a brief recess.
We said 10 o'clock was the time, right?
And she was pulled over. Oh, gosh.
I know. Everyone's like, why?
No problem, Dan.
Never fails.
Yeah, she could just sit right here.
I was just, I was gonna wait for Grant to.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll go without him.
Well, I guess, yeah, we can't go without Grant.
Recording in progress.
All right, we'll call this meeting back to session. Looks like we're gonna have a budget presentation from the Health Department.
Good morning. Caitlin Emmerich, Public Health Director for Black Hat County Public Health. And I have shortened my presentation a little bit from last year, so I think you all will appreciate that. Before I get started, I do just have a, a couple of people I just need to acknowledge because this has been a process. I don't know how much our, my peers have shared, but for us, it's, it's been a process this year. And so Amanda has been really helpful during this process. Our program managers, Bethany Fratsky, Sarah Mergenthaller, Jared Parmener, and Tanya Wilder. Matthew Vabrekin, our finance manager, has worked tirelessly on this. And Michelle has just been an extraordinary help throughout this process. I cannot thank her enough for all of the work that she's done to support us and walk us through it. So to kind of get started on our, on our purpose statement, just our vision and mission, I was a reminder of that. Our vision is that we exist to ensure people in our community have equitable opportunities and resources to lead healthier, more fulfilling, and longer lives. And our mission is to protect people in our community from health hazards, promote healthy behaviors, and prevent, prevent disease. It's a little bit different format than you all have, but it's the same content. In terms of our financial metrics, we did add some metrics for FY23 to better reflect the programs and services that we have offered. So just kind of a review of those. Our direct medical and oral health care visits, that first line is actually a transition from a previous metric. It used to be reported as Success Street visits, but with, several years ago, you know, we, we stopped providing services in Success Street with the way that we did previously. And so this metric is now really comprised of medical and oral health visits that we provide in our offices and out in the field to our community. Environmental inspections has not changed over time. That's a reflection of a lot of different inspections that our environmental health team performs, primarily food inspections for food establishments. But it also includes private wells, TNCs, private septic, healthy homes, childhood lead poisoning, pools, tattoos, trash haulers, mosquito surveillance, salvage yards, and rubble sites. So all of the different inspections that our environmental team performs. We're no longer reporting on home care aid visits because we do not have that program anymore. And we did add two new ones this year. So communicable disease cases reported. This is a reflection of the work that our Disease Surveillance and Investigation Team does. This is the count of the total number of reportable conditions that we receive to us. Whether they were confirmed or not, we, we didn't count those, but this is just kind of how many we process that come in. And then the number of non-direct client care services is a reflection of some of the non-direct care work that's happening in our public health center, like child care nurse consulting, and our community health work in our community health programs. So that includes Care For Yourself, Clients, Iowa Get Screened, so our Breast and Cervical Cancer and Choroidal Cancer Screening Programs, our FIRST5 program, Medicaid Informing, Presumptive Eligibility, and Pick A Better Snack program. So that's kind of an overview of our financial metrics. And so jumping right into our budget proposal with revenue. This is just, should be exactly what you have in front of you with the revenue sheet. I have a few notes that I'll go over, and I don't expect you to be able to read that, but I hope, I hope it's big enough on the handout that you have. Our over increase, overall increase of revenue, excuse me, is 3.02%, which is $70,695. And a few things to highlight here in this section. For Activity 52333, which is our maternal-child health grant, that is showing a decrease due to, we've moved our Hawkeye revenue to 52490, and we've adjusted down to our FY24 funding allocation for that child health grant, which is $403,833. Our child health grant is probably our most complicated grant in terms of budget purposes. There are eight different budget categories within that grant, and so the way that they reflect in our revenues, they're not all in the same activity line because of the source of funding that they are. So that is part of the change for that one. 52334, our well-being grants, we are seeing a decrease largely due to the loss of our Wise Woman grant. This was a grant that the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services apply through the federal government, and this past year, they notified us, they are not going to be applying for those funds. It was a, it was a competitive application year, and they chose not to, to compete and apply for those funds. So in previous years, that revenue has been about $22,000. So that is reflected in our, in our budget. All other grants in this activity are either stable or increasing in revenue. So you don't see the, the decrease of the full amount in that because we have other grants that are kind of increasing. In 52490, which is the other state and federal pass-through that does include funds for our DULA project, the Hawkeye funds, which we moved from a maternal and child health grant in our Grants to Counties program. We did also create a new organization for Hawkeye so we can better track those funds a little bit better with the way our organizational structure is. The 52623, the Public Health Nurses Grant, is our local public health services grant. We are seeing a decrease of $25,825 from FY24 due to a form, due to the formula that Iowa HHS uses for determining funding allocation to the counties. So that includes a base funding component, total population, elderly population, and low-income population. So we're just seeing our numbers of those decrease compared to our peers across the state. And so our allocation went down a little bit. For 52890, miscellaneous federal grants and reimbursements, we are seeing an increase in that one due to COVID Bridge Access Funding, which we've received the award for, but we haven't, we don't anticipate billing any of the expenses, and it's a reimbursable grant, so the revenue will come in when we bill the expenses. That's a largely operational expenses. It's, it's mostly professional services, I believe. And then 53300 Swimming Pool and 53330 Food Establishments. We've adjusted those up, so you're seeing an increase in revenue for both of those to adjust to our FY23 actuals. And then finally, our 55300 Nursing Service Fee. That's our, those are funds that we received through EPI for childcare nurse consulting services. Those are kind of passed through EPI from our early childhood Iowa boards. Are there any questions for me on the revenue component? Otherwise, I'll keep going. So I will move to expenditures. First, salaries. For salaries and benefits, we're reflecting an overall increase of $339,204, or a 6.32% increase in salaries and benefits from FY24. This is reflected with a request to increase our .7 FTE, Temporary Community Health Worker, to a 1.0 full-time equivalency. The benef, or, or the, excuse me, the impact of increasing by that .3 is a $24,453 increase. And just kind of as a fun fact, salaries and benefits account for 90% of our department expenses. Our operational expenses make up the other 10%. This is just kind of a reflection of what you're seeing on your sheet. With the salary and wages line item in particular, is a 10.26% increase, which is the, the greatest kind of category that we're seeing increasing. That's based on Unit 8 negotiations and a placeholder for non-bargaining. For the FTE summary, as I mentioned, I'm looking to, I'm requesting that we increase that .7 Temporary Community Health Worker to a 1.0 FTE. So you'll see an overall increase from '24, which was 58.5 FTEs, to an FY25 requested to 58.8 FTEs. The other changes that are reflected are just kind of cleaning up organizationally wide which person is in which organization. And then this is kind of the last slide that I want to talk about, about staffing and salary before I move into the operational expenses. I just want to talk a little bit about longevity that we're seeing in the department. Our FY25 budget, which is, which is request, which is 58.8 FTEs, is a total of 61 individuals. And in two and a half years, 36 of those 61 individuals, or 59%, are in new positions or that position is currently vacant. Some of those positions have been vacated and filled more than one time in two and a half, that two and a half year span. If we look at, you know, one and a half years, the last one and a half years, 51% of our staff are in new positions or that position is vacant. That's 31 of our, of our 61 individuals that we have on staff at Public Health. Right now, we have, I think I lost my notes. We have four positions in the bargaining unit that are vacant, and we have soon-to-be four positions in our non-bargaining category that are vacant for a total of eight FTEs currently that are vacant. So that's included in that percentage calculation of new or vacant. And the reason I talk about this is because it impacts our oper, my, our operational expenses. If you look at kind of the plus side of this coin of what's our seniority looking like, about 34% of staff are in positions and have, you know, been with us for five or more years. So that's great. About a third of our staff is, you know, five or more years. But, you know, those, those 59% in the, in the past two and a half years that are new to their position or that position is vacant is, is concerning to me. We talked about this a little bit at our last Board of Health meeting, and Amanda shared an estimate that the cost of unboarding a new employee is about one-third of their annual salary. Did I get that right, Amanda? So if we're assuming that, you know, kind of a middle-of-the-road employee, a community health worker, for instance, which is a GS14, has an annual salary starting out about $49,000, the estimated cost to the county to onboard that employee is about $16,000. And, you know, we've seen in the last two and a half years, 36 of those, $16,000 happen. So the, the cost of turnover is something that I'm concerned about. And so I've reflected that in our operating expense budget, primarily in our training and education. So for operating expenses, our, our overall increase from FY24 to FY25 is $46,081, or a 7.83% increase from FY24. It, it is a lower total sum value than our revenue. That was really important to us. In fact, we came back to it and lowered it so we could get, get our operating expense total lower than our revenue expense. And so I'm glad that the Board of Health afforded us a little bit of time to come back and really look at that and get that down as far as we can, could get it. But I am requesting in '0256, our training and education, an increase there. And that's largely due to the turnover that I just talked about. We have a lot of new staff that really need us to invest training and education for them, to get them brought up to speed in their new positions. And so I've reflected that in the request. The increase is largely due to a conversion in our local public health services grant that was previously allocated to a home health subcontract. So it's not converting, you know, funds that were. So it's not converting, you know, funds that were previously salary to training and education. It's converting funds that were previously subcontracted out to VNA for training and education. And the increase is also due to training carve-out in our first five grant. We have maximized salary to the extent that we can in that grant and kind of the remainder of the award we've allocated to training. And then moving on, O2, six, zero, our dues and membership dues and membership increase is due to fees for professional organizations. We're seeing those increase a little bit. Our professional organization memberships are required for some of our CEUs and also allows us to register for professional development opportunities with discounted member or discounted registration rates. And we utilize grant funds for those dues and memberships primarily. For O4, four, three, office equipment, we have increased that to match our FY23 actual for service and repair. And this is primarily for our postage machine for the mailings that we do. O4, four, eight, copier supplies, we're seeing an increase there due to toner and ink prices. Our copy machines are aging and as the copy machines age, the more expensive the toner and ink gets. So Matthew has made a recommendation that we look at renegotiating renegotiating those printer contracts in FY25 so we can hopefully reduce the costs of our copier supplies. And then O5, two, two, signs is increasing due to the ability for us to use grant funds to do a billboard advertising this year for HIV and hepatitis C prevention.
So that postage went down significantly? Is that?
Yeah, I'm I'm going to be honest, I'm not exactly sure which program used postage before, but we're primarily using our Pitney Bowes postage machine. I know the cost of postage just did go up. We get a discounted rate because we have that postage machine. So let me see, I can look at that one real quick. Can you remind me real quick which is postage?
Zero, four, four, six.
Zero, four, four, six, thank you.
Pardon me, was that zero, four, four, zero?
Zero, four, four, six. I don't have it on my notes, Matthew, so if you do, please share. Do you know why postage is decreasing for us this year?
No, but I'll look while you I'll look into it right now.
Okay, we'll come back to it.
I mean, it does look like it's been going trending down anyway since 22 to 23 and halfway through the year only at 3,000, so it's.
Yeah, we'll come back to that one.
Oh, that's all right.
I'm going to keep moving kind of to the next page of the operational expenses. So I I really focused on the notes I'm giving you to increases. So the decreases, I don't have I don't have a lot of notes on. So O5, eight, six, wearing apparel. That is primarily for scrubs for our direct service staff, so our oral health team and nursing team. And that includes a top, a bottom, and a jacket for them. Zero, five, eight, eight, safety and protective equipment is personal protective equipment for our team out in the field for our environmental health team that is covered under our Grants to Counties grant if we would need to, you know, bill anything there. O6, two, five, licenses increase is primarily due to Adobe Pro. We did just switch to enterprise version for Adobe Pro because we were having a lot of people needing individual license. And so we just made the change to switch to enterprise. So it's a little bit easier to administer those licenses for. This also includes Lexus Nexus, which is used in our disease surveillance investigation program. Damaji, which is EDOT for TB patients, so they can do a video of them taking their medication and then the nurses can watch it that way. And then our our laboratory, our CLIA lab in fees with the State Hygienic Laboratory. O6, seven, zero, professional services is largely due to we received a Wellmark Match Grant for $50,000. We did receive the revenue for that already, but the expenses will come in FY25. And Michelle, I probably will need your help if there's any questions on that one. But we are reflecting the expenses in our FY25 budget. We're also asking for a small amount of funds for HIPAA consultation because we're we're just needing to kind of do more training and education and things with our HIPAA compliance. This also reflects language translation services for interpretation and translation and laboratory analysis for our blood lead and water testing. O6, nine, two, advertising is an increase due to that COVID Bridge Access Grant. I mentioned that in the revenue section that we've been awarded, but we expect all of the revenues and expenditures to happen in FY25. Zero, eight, zero, zero, transportation is largely due to grant-funded projects. We have two grants that require us to provide assistance with access to care for clients that we serve. So that's our ITS grant for HIV and hepatitis C prevention and our Child Health Grant. And then 1, zero, two, six, building land and lease is a grant-funded project. So we're when we're out in the community doing outreach events, if there is a fee for using that space, that's what we put into that line item. And then I also just wanted to talk about tuberculosis expenses a little bit. So it's been a few months since I've talked about where where we are with tuberculosis, but we continue to see our increases rise. Currently, we're about three times our average of, you know, from 2014 to 2021, 2022 is really when we saw that the rates start to go up. Which in that period of time previously, we were about four active TB cases per year. And I think I think Sarah updated me the other day that so far this year, we've case managed 13 active cases of TB. And we're, you know, halfway through the year. So that number is going to only continue to increase. And the complexity of those TB cases are increasing. We're seeing more comorbidities and more severe illness that is resulting in more complex medical case management and extended recovery time. So therefore, they're in voluntary isolation longer because it's taking them longer to recover from disease because they're more ill when they're, you know, when they are actively ill with tuberculosis. So under Iowa Code, Chapter 139A and Iowa Administrative Code 641, we are required to address the needs of isolated or quarantine individuals in a systematic and competent fashion. So that includes providing adequate food, clothing, shelter, means of communicating with those in and outside of quarantine or isolation, medication, and competent medical care. So as long as we are placing them in isolation, we're responsible for their basic needs. Once they are no longer actively infectious and they can come out of voluntary isolation, then we're no longer, you know, required to make sure that their needs are met. But we are seeing an increase in several of our line items in our operating budget because of the fact that we're seeing more TB patient, more TB patients that we're placing in voluntary isolation and we're having to cover their expenses. So this includes 05, eight, two, household and institutional, 08, zero, eight, food and stamps, 08, one, four, clothing, 08, two, zero, shelter, 08, two, three, telephone, 08, two, four, gas, electric, water, and 08, three, eight, motor motor vehicle expenses. The increase in those line line items are primarily a result from the fact that we're seeing our TB cases increase and we're actually, you know, having to incur those expenses right now.
Caitlin?
Yeah?
The the O4, four, six postage, it's lighter. In FY24, we were budget-heavy. And then we when we looked at our FY23 actuals, it was more comparable. So that's why that you see that decrease.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, yep, so that makes sense. So our FY23 actual is $10,365. So we have in our budget request for FY25, $13,110. Any other questions on operating expenses for me?
Yeah, how long? I mean, i- is there an average for how long somebody with with TB needs to be in quarantine? Or is it really case by case?
It really is a case by case situation. I mean, it it used to be the the TB nurses, and I'm going to I'm going to get my facts wrong. But it used to be, you know, a shorter period of time, like maybe a month, for example. And please don't quote me because I'm sure that average is not correct. But now we're seeing, you know, maybe like two months or three months that it's taking someone to clear the infection well enough with the medications to no longer be infectious. And not only is it is it taking them longer to get out of that infectious period, but it's also taking them to recover with a full regimen. So previously, the full regimen of medication, we're going to have the first initial period where you're infectious and then you get past that and then but you still have to finish taking the medication to completely clear, you know, the TB from your your body. That used to be maybe like a six-month regimen. And now we're seeing it extend into nine. And I believe we've had at least one, possibly more, where it's been a more than a year of medication regimen to clear because we're seeing that individuals that are being diagnosed right now are much more sick. Like I mentioned, they have comorbidities, which makes that recovery process take longer because there's other things going on. And we're also seeing a trend that our cases have been very impoverished. So are not, you know, just their bodies are not in a place where healing and recovery is a speedy process. Okay, I'm going to move to the capital request. So capital expenses in FY22 and FY23 were primarily grant-funded through COVID response grants. I don't believe we've come as a department and asked for a capital request in the last couple of years because we have the ability to use our COVID response funds for some of the capital items. So COVID grants allowed $438,000 to be spent on conference room upgrades, digital wayfinding, software training, wireless access points, updated computers and technology equipment, and the digital digital outdoor sign at Pinecrest. And so that's kind of when you look at the, you know, previous year expenses, those are the things that are being reflected as capital expenses. But they've primarily been COVID Response Fund funded. This year, I am including in our capital request the request to purchase three vehicles. And the background for this is we currently have 23 vehicles in our fleet. Four of those vehicles were purchased with ARPA funds. In 2022, we received two escapes. In 2023, we received the transit van that the oral health team is using and also received a Trailblazer in 2023 to use. We were approved to receive four Trailblazers, but due to supply chain things and delays, those remainder, the remainder of those three Trailblazers that were bid out, the bid was approved, we're not going to be receiving those. The the dealership has told us that they cannot deliver those vehicles for the price that they were bid at. And so it's that's kind of just not going to happen with unless we go through another process. So we do intend to sell three vehicles that have been approved for sale by by you all as a board. Those three vehicles are the ones that I show here on the slideshow as the photos. So those three are a 2010 Ford Fusion, which is current, all three of these, I guess, are currently not being driven due to mechanic recommendation. A 2007 Chevy Malibu and a 2009 Ford Ranger. We also have another 2010 Ford Fusion that's out of rotation due to the Waterloo City Garage mechanic, which is where we take our cars for servicing, their recommendation to take it out of rotation. So that one's not been approved for sale, but that it's also not currently being driven due to that mechanic recommendation. So we do intend to sell at the minimum three and hopefully that fourth vehicle. The the rationale behind the capital request is we should have about 20 vehicles in our fleet at all times. Most of these are assigned out to staff who drive them on a regular basis. So all pretty much all of our environmental health team, except for the supervisor and manager, are assigned a vehicle and they that's what they use to get out to do the food inspections and and well-inseptic inspections and pool inspections and all those things. And then we also have others that are out and about in the community, you know, on a regular basis. They're assigned a vehicle. We do have two in our fleet that are not assigned out for anyone else to use them, that it's not assigned a vehicle currently. The the 2010 Ford Fusions, I mentioned two that are out of rotation, one of which has been approved to sell. We have five of those and they continually have issues. I would really like to get them out of our fleet. They just continually kind of cause problems for us. One of them is not put on the lift for service work because the undercarriage is is rusted and the and they won't put it on the lift. So I would really like to be able to to get those out of our fleet. And I also would like to kind of move forward with this approach to have a regular vehicle replacement in our fleet so we don't get to a place in the future where I have, you know, purchased vehicles because there was money at the time. But then they're all due for replacement at the same time. That causes a significant budgetary burden that I would like to avoid and just move into a regular rotation plan. Any questions for me on the capital request?
We did have a rotation set up for them at one point in time, so we must have kind of got away from that.
Well, there we have been purchasing them with ARPA funds, right? So we've purchased in the last two years, been able to purchase four more. And then I think there were a few that were purchased in 19 and there were a few that were purchased in 16. But we definitely do have some years where we haven't moved that through rotation.
Sure. And someone's keeping track of the mileage, I suppose, a little better now. I think it was at a time when there were some rotations made and the mileage was off or something. And there just were some other issues.
We do closely monitor that. We have a kind of a fleet manager, which is one of those other duties as assigned. That's our accounting specialist, Lori Roundinghouse. And she captures quarterly mileage and and makes sure that we document that well. She's also in charge of the maintenance costs and making sure they get in for regular maintenance appointments, oil changes, and that kind of stuff. She manages that. And we do have, I mean, that's available. I will say, some of the cars that are assigned out to individuals, they don't leave the county. You know, they don't leave town maybe or or aren't leaving the metro area. And so the mileage stays low even though they're being used every single day. One of the examples is that is is the vehicle that we use for our pick-a-better-snack team that's going out to the schools. We're only in the Waterloo School District, so we're not going very far to get to those schools. But they're going, you know, to a couple of schools a day, so they're constantly out and about. But they might put on, you know, three miles a day. And so the mileage is low for some of the vehicles like that where they're just not going very far, but they are using it regularly. So we are kind of looking at that right now of how can we So we are kind of looking at that right now of how can we readjust the rotation and the assignment? Maybe they're assigned to a environmental health inspector for a while to get the mileage up a little bit and then they get reassigned, you know, to somebody that's not going very far. So we're currently looking at that right now.
Oh, good that you have the records, I think, to show that some of the ones are becoming very problematic for you because that gets costly as well as you can't depend on them for vehicles for your staff.
Yes, yeah, we, we definitely do have some that are tagged as, they do not leave town.
Or go up on lifts.
And then the last slide I have for you is just the comparison of the revenue and expenses total and the resulting tax support for that. So we are submitting a proposed FY '25 budget request in the amount totaling $6,343,642, which is a 6.47% increase from our FY '24 amended budget. Our FY '25 budget will be funded by $2,413,321 in operating revenue, resulting in a property tax asking of $3,930,321, which is an 8.7% increase compared to the FY '24 approved Any other questions for me?
No, I mean, no real big surprises or anything this year, it's all pretty straightforward.
Yes.
Appreciate all the work Dylan and you did.
It was quite a bit of work. I will say, you know, it took, I, it took us a while to get here. We, from our, the initial budget, took, I think, three or four rounds of cutting to our operating expenses to try to get those down because we know our salaries are going up more than they have in the past because they need to for us to retain employees. That's my opinion. So we can hopefully keep people longer and not invest that third of their salary in recruiting new people so frequently, so.
Had the exit interviews resulted in, as far as the training and, like you said, putting more value into the employee and them feeling that that's important?
Yeah, I can't really speak to the exit interviews, Amanda, if you want to, you can, because the HR does a great job of keeping those kind of confidential for the employee, if, if it makes sense too. But what I can say is about 18 months ago, we did that, a learning culture survey and a core competency survey to really look at the needs of our workforce. And through, through the learning culture survey, it really came out strong that we need to invest a little bit more in training and kind of professional development skills more than, you know, hard public health skills. But we also know because of the number of new staff that we have and the results of our core competencies training, which is more of the hard public health skills, we have some work to do there too. So we really need to invest in both of the, you know, how are we living our core values and that, you know, professional development as well as core public health skills.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, Caitlin.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Michelle, anything else you want to cover or go over today?
Well, I sent you another whole batch of support activities, so I think it's up to you if you want to talk through all of those, some of those today, or if you're out of time for today.
Yeah, you mentioned the time you needed to leave, but...
Yeah, I gotta leave in about two, three minutes.
I, I'm okay waiting for Thursday for...
That's fine.
That's good with everybody.
All right.
All right. All right, we'll move on to any reports or information from the board. All right, I do want to take one moment just to thank Supervisor Leyland for her service as chair this, this last term. It's, it's a role that we all appreciate. It's, it's beyond just, just keeping the meetings running. There's a lot that goes in behind work and just appreciate your, your service as a supervisor in general too and your friendship as well. And so instead of getting a plaque, we decided to go with a clock this year and it is actually its alarm function too.
Probably.
Apparently, apparently alarm clocks are still a thing, but we just wanted to thank you.
Well, thank you very much. So thank you very much, it means a lot. I said it was a great year and everybody, I couldn't thank you enough what a great year it was because all the work that we've accomplished and all the things we did as a board as well as the staff. So, yeah. And you must have seen that the clock on my ledge doesn't work.
I attest, this one does keep time and everything. Gabby, did you want to take a photo or we could stand and pose?
Oh, sure.
It's been a little while since we've done one of those.
Yeah, we were talking about doing the, one of the things that we needed to do, you know, we put on the website, we always have the picture of the board. And we needed to change that out too, so we need to get that one.
Oh, well, of course.
Just me or just everybody?
I actually saw on a insurance commercial that, if I'm counting, I'm old, so I...
Oh, yeah, I saw that too. I saw that too. Really? Yeah, I think everybody still does. So we need to get Gabby to take that picture with us today. I was going to say too, because we haven't replaced that, some of those things on the website, so.
I think so.
Super.
All right, any other reports or information from the board? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, this meeting is adjourned, thank you everyone.